Ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council, please attend the call meeting of the city council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, May 12, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy spring. We're starting off with the member that has sent you on May the night entitled Flood Plane, look, excuse me, Flood Map Open House. And we've been briefing you all along, and Meg Pudinger is going to give you a briefing on this upcoming open house that will take place in about a week.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. One second. I got some noise. It's up to you. Yeah.
Technical difficulties.
Tear up for later.
Oh, it's on, honey. It's on.
Here we go.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, probably should say flood map update, update, because we've been updating you as we go. As you may remember, FEMA released the preliminary flood maps in January, and we've been reviewing them. And the next part of the process is to public outreach. So we're going to be hosting a flood risk open house. It's going to be at Bydaway. And the purpose is so that residents can come and they can talk to our staff, but also, more importantly, FEMA will have their staff there, they'll have representatives from the state, insurance specialists, and residents will be able to come find out about the map process, about what the changes are, and what it means to them, and what they can do if they're affected. This is the first time that FEMA has actually had money allocated in their budget to provide support for the communities to have these open houses. In the past, the communities had to do that all on their own. So FEMA will be bringing computers, printers, and all sorts of stuff, so that people will be able to come and see what's going on with the flood maps. And they'll be doing some advertising, in addition to the advertising that we, the city, will be doing. So the open house is going to be Wednesday, July 9, at the Pavilion at Bydaway, from 4:30 to 7:30. And like I said, people will be mailing this postcard out to everybody who's in a flood zone in the middle of June, and then we'll also be emailing it and that sort of thing. So we'll be directing to the people who we know are directly affected, but then also outreach beyond that. And we'll be there, and like I said, FEMA and the state will also be there supporting so that people can come and find out what's going on. FEMA and their mapping partners have created this website that we would encourage residents to go to. They can access and they can see what the current maps are and what the proposed maps are. On the map, the blue is water, so blue is the high-risk area, and the yellow is the caution area. And so people can create this comparison before they come to the meeting, and we would encourage people to do so before they come to the meeting, and they'll get a report that looks like this, that they can print out. And it shows on the top what their current map is and at the bottom what the proposed map is. And if they do this before they come, it'll speed up the process when they get there, and they can optimize the time when they come to the meeting, because that tends to be one of the bottlenecks where people are getting their address typed in. And if people have problems, they can call our department, Department of Neighborhood Advancement, or they can email me, and we'll help them through the process. If they want to come into our office, we'll walk them through so that they can have this report and see exactly what their risk is. You can see on here that it actually says the percentages of what zone they're in. So it's a really useful site that people can go to to really see that information and then bring that with them to the open house.
So Meg, do we have people that were not in a flood zone area that will be now with these new maps?
Yes.
Okay, so...
There are some people who will be going out, but the vast majority of changes will be people going in. And at the end of this process, we will actually be getting from FEMA a list of changes since last firm, is what they call it, so that we'll know exactly who was affected. But yes, for the most part, there will be, because the information that they use for this study is better information, there'll be people who are going in who are not currently in one now, or going from a moderate risk to a higher-risk zone. So to let, in addition to today, to let people know about this, we're going to be doing the direct mail postcard that we talked about, that'll be going out. We'll also take that information. We already sent one "Save the Date" out on May 1, but we'll be sending out three more email blasts through the city system, but then also partnering with the Hampton Roads Real Estate Association, and they emailed it out through their network. We're going to be pitching a story to the Virginia Pilot, be using social media, PC TV, print media, the electronic billboard on 264, and also in the building here and at the building at Social Services. And then it's already on the Port's VA website, and we'll have it on the city's front page when the time comes, so that hopefully through all of those avenues, everybody can be touched. We'll also, we printed some extra of the postcards, and we'll be putting those out in various locations where people can pick them up if they don't have electronic means. So hopefully, through all of those means, we will broadcast and try and touch as many people as we want, because people may not know that they're going into a flood zone, which, like I said, we'll be notifying those people later on, but we want everybody to come find out what their risk is, because you can't protect yourself if you don't know what your risk is.
That's right.
So, any questions?
Do we have any idea how many new homes that are now in flood zones that were not?
We don't have that data yet. We will be getting that from FEMA. We don't have that information yet. There are currently, I think, 3,280-something parcels with buildings in flood zones. There's a lot of vacant lots also in flood zones, which is kind of a good thing, but we don't have that information yet, but we will be getting it.
That includes commercial as well?
That includes commercial as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good. If you have any questions about this or get questions from citizens, please let us know. We'll meet with the citizen, show them the website, and help them go right through the calculations. And the important thing is for as many people that plan to show up, and we really want everybody that's got a question to show up, to have done the calculations. Now, the next is a briefing on the cemetery. We schedule our agenda items well in advance, and you know that we have been working on the cemeteries for a while, because you had a couple of very quick reports from Dennis. We have reorganized in order to do more at the cemeteries. We're not satisfied with the conditions of the cemeteries. We've been in that situation for a while. That's what led us to put this extra work and extra reorganization. It's just coincidental that while we had this scheduled, there've been a couple of letters to the editors about the cemetery that were negative. We've also gotten positive feedback, too, so there's a little bit of a balance there. But we're probably our biggest critic. We don't like the condition. This is going to be the first of several different cemetery briefings. It's a complicated matter. It's complicated by a date in 1960, when the city sold all of its burial spaces to a private entity. And then in 1964, sold a triangle piece of land that today looks like it's a public cemetery, but it's actually private land. And so as we work our way through this and as we ask our own questions, we'll build up our base of knowledge. But we're moving full steam ahead to make a difference with the cemetery.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Cemeteries is a tough, tough animal to get your arms around, and for a lot of reasons. It's a healing place for people as they lose loved ones, but there's a very diverse group of people in a cemetery, and everybody has a different opinion about what's acceptable and what's not. And we've been working through that process of trying to understand what we really are dealing with, and tonight's presentation, as Mr. Rowe said, is just the beginning of a lot of work that we're doing in cemeteries. I was kind of perplexed when I first got this task of cemeteries, because I made a couple of phone calls, and it was late in the afternoon looking for information. Well, the next morning, I came in, and I had a stack of stuff this far in front of my door, and I couldn't figure out how it got there so quick. Well, now that we're dealing with the issues of cemeteries, I understand why they got there so quick, because whoever had it wanted to give it away as quick as they could, so somebody else would take care of it. But we're working, we're making some real improvements. The purpose of the overview is, it's got a lot of components here, but the first part is we want to talk about the future, because John has come up with, Mr. Rowe's come up with a vision for cemeteries that's, it's a little different than what we were used to. We're going to identify all of the city-owned cemeteries, because there's probably folks in this room, and certainly citizens, who don't even understand where all of the city-owned cemeteries are. We're going to break down real quickly the difference in responsibilities, because it is a complex issue, because we're working with a contractor. We're going to talk about the things that we've done up to this point to try to improve cemeteries, kind of that first blast of things. We'll show you some of the current conditions in the cemeteries. We'll talk about maintenance and operation budget, what they are, what it has been, what it should be. We'll talk about some challenges, and then we'll go into some issues with Mount Calvary Cemetery Complex that are...
Let me stop you right there. That's because this is more than one cemetery, but it's Mount Olive, Mount Calvary, Fisher's Hill, and the Paupers Field. And so for the purpose of the briefing, we're calling this the Mount Calvary Cemetery Complex, and you'll see that as we go through.
Our vision for the future is, John brought to my attention a while back, that Europeans use cemeteries as open space and parks and benches, and people can go there and reflect, not just if you have a loved one in the cemetery, but if you just want to take a walk at lunchtime, that the cemetery is a beautiful place. And since I've spent time out there at all the cemeteries, I realize that cemeteries really are beautiful places, and there's so much history there that it's, the whole history of our city is found in those cemeteries. And you walk by and you see something, and you're reading, and you think about what that person had, what effect did that person have on the city? And there's so much history. It's a beautiful place. We want to install park benches, we want to install some historic signage, we want to go along with some of the things that are already happening in Cedar Grove Cemetery, install water fountains, matching trash receptacles instead of having a hodgepodge of different types of trash receptacles, and we want to improve the lawn care service. Right now, we're mowing weeds. We're mowing dandelions and buttercups and any kind of weeds you can think of, that's what we're mowing. We're not actually mowing grass. And if we can get to the point where we have grass there, we believe it will be much easier to maintain it, because weeds grow much faster than grass does. We want to capitalize on the historic significance of the cemeteries. I've talked about that. I mean, all of you know the history of Cedar Grove and of Mount Calvary, and who's buried in these cemeteries. It's so much that we need to capitalize on some of that information's out, but we need to make a point to get that information out so people actually come here to visit that. And we want to tap into a new tourism market with the path of history and see how we can combine those two things together, so when folks come here to go to the path of history, that they go to the cemeteries as well, because that's part of our history. The current cemeteries we have, and we're going to go through these specifically, first of all, is the Cedar Grove Cemetery. Cedar Grove is located in a downtown area, and this is London Boulevard down here. This is, the Starbucks is here, this is the new hotel, the old hotel, Effingham Street going down towards the Naval Hospital. The only entrance to the Cedar Grove Cemetery that's open is up here. There's one here, but the one at the bottom that's closest to the church is Fried Chicken is only open during cemeteries, when you get in and out. The main entrance is up at the top. I want to bring your attention to a scatter garden, I believe it's right in, John, it's right there, isn't it?
Yeah, that's it.
It's a scatter garden where you can have your cream eggs spread in that area, and it's a nice, beautiful garden in this area where you can actually go sit down. The next cemetery is Oak Grove, which is just down London Boulevard. This is London Boulevard here, this is Peninsula Avenue here, and that is the main entrance. Cedar Grove Cemetery was actually opened in 1834. This was, Oak Grove Cemetery was just after that, so Cedar Grove is the oldest of the cemeteries, and then Oak Grove comes in behind that. And Olive Branch Cemetery, this is Clifford Street as you come down here, and this is City Park Avenue here. And this is the golf course, City Park Golf Course, and the park is back in here on the water. Now, Mr. Rowe already mentioned earlier that in 1964, that a tract of land was sold to Wimber. That tract of land is Olive Branch Annex, and it's this section here that I'm outlining that's up against Baines Creek. That was sold to Wimber and started in 1964, and shortly, five days after it was sold in 1964, that tract of land went to council, and ordinance was passed to make it a cemetery. So the old part of Olive Branch starts right here, and it takes up this section. And this section is called Olive Branch Annex, but we all, if you come across the Clifford Street Bridge, you see one big cemetery there, but in fact, it's not. And then the next one, and probably one of our, one of our cemeteries that has been neglected, and this was not a city-owned cemetery until recently, is Mount Calvary. This is, you can see it off the interstate, that's going east on Interstate 264. Pulaski Street, this is DeCreek Boulevard, and Pulaski Street comes in right here. And the next slide, break this down, we're calling this Mount Calvary Cemetery Complex. And Mount Calvary Cemetery Complex, we're using that as a broad term, because it takes in four different cemeteries, which is Mount Calvary, and this is Pulaski Street, Fisher Hill, Mount Olive, and then Paupers Field. And Paupers Field is sometimes referred to as Potter's Field, and the reason it's sometimes referred to as Potter's Field is because it was where poor people were buried, and oftentimes, people were looking for clay. They dug that, dug clay out, left a hole there, and poor people were buried into that, in that section. We're going to refer to it in all of our conversations as Paupers Field, Mount Olive, Mount Calvary. And then Fisher's Hill is a section that we'll talk a little bit more about. We don't own that yet, but we're close to being able to own that, and this...
Did it show the two roads that exist today?
The two roads in the cemetery? There's one here, and then there's another one that comes in here. And there's a ditch that, and I'm guessing on this from the picture, because it's not real clear, but I'm guessing that that ditch cuts across about right here.
And the term...
It's not drivable.
It is drivable.
Well, there's two, there's two roads that are drivable, here and here.
And I was going to tell you, that road is a flattering term, because as you'll see later in the presentation, I've driven on the roads with my truck as recently as last week, but it got to a point where I actually dismounted, because I wanted to make sure I didn't sink up to my axle. This cemetery is challenged by a severe drainage problem, and you'll see later in the presentation, we've done a topographical survey, photometric. We need to know what the lay of the land is besides being flat, so we can figure out how to drain it. And again, you quickly went through the slides that listed all of our cemeteries, but Fisher Hill will be the last one that we will take ownership in July, and we'll cover that later in the presentation.
I'll real briefly go over the history, because we're going to come back to you at a later date, but we felt this was important that you had this information. Now, prior to 1960, the city owned and managed all of the cemeteries. That means all the internal services were done by the city, we kept all of our own records, and it was a full operation by the city. In 1960, the city sold all of the vacant grave sites that they had left, and at that point, went into an agreement with a private contractor to manage the funeral services and the record-keeping.
Let's call that burials, burial operations, which means they sold the grave sites and they did the opening and the closing of the graves.
But I want to, I want to correct that.
That's all of our city's cemeteries?
That's correct. If there was a vacant burial spot in any of those three cemeteries, it got sold in 1960.
What about the private cemeteries?
Nothing, that, the best we can tell is that that sale of vacant burial spaces only applied to Cedar Grove, Oak Grove, and Olive Branch. It's only lately that the city says, "We need to do something about these historic cemeteries that were at one time in private ownership," and that's why we have gone through the process to take possession. And we have possession of all but one, and that's Fisher Hill, and the Mount Calvary Complex.
Well, is there any connection with Lincoln Cemetery?
No, sir.
On DeCreek Boulevard?
No, sir. And that's another issue, too. I mean, I think it's just a matter of time that the owner of that cemetery will come knocking on the door to say, "I want to get, I want out."
It looks like he wants out.
Yeah. And the thing is, is that for a long time, and we'll cover this, the state code has had a requirement that there be, established a perpetual care fund. And I've been doing this stuff for four and a half decades, and I can tell you that I haven't seen a perpetual care fund that's adequate enough to throw off enough earnings annually to support the maintenance of the cemetery. And it's typically a real severe problem for the private sector.
I just want to correct one thing, that I think I gave the impression that record-keeping was included in that switch in 1960. That's not true. That didn't happen until later on, and we'll talk about that when we go through the history in more in-depth.
Now, those three cemeteries, that transaction, did that also involve a perpetual care
We have not seen the, we've seen, there was, council created a committee, you might call it an ad hoc committee, in 1974, and it consisted of four people, of which probably only one person of that committee, several have died. It's from that report that we learned of the 1960 sale. We have looked at the transaction that took place in '64, and we actually have seen the deed transfer. So we haven't, all we have right now on the 1960 transaction is what's in that council report from the committee that was created, the latter part of 1974, and they gave the report in the spring of 1975. Now, the report says, and this is what's interesting, is that the city sold those vacant grave sites because of a lawsuit that was filed in federal district court. Now, we've talked with George, and it must have been a threat of a lawsuit. We tried to find that, too, in the minutes, so that we could go to the newspaper and find out exactly what this is mean.
No actual lawsuit ever filed.
So we're doing, that's why we preface the briefing, where we still got a lot of questions that we're working our way through. We know that that triangle got sold in 1964, and there was an actual redidation of the deed. And that's, if when you come across the Clifford Street Bridge, the school's on your left, the cemetery's on your right, that triangle piece of land that looks, you know, if you probably interviewed 10 people in the street who owns that, they would say the city does. Well, the city does, but we counted as part of our cemetery, and we maintain the cemetery.
So there was no perpetual care agreement that you could find?
We haven't found one yet.
The, you need to remember that the graves, only the grave sites were sold in 1960. It wasn't the whole cemetery. So the perpetual care relationship or obligation stayed with the city, it appears.
And, right.
And that's the way, and that's the way that was set up. Now, the second transaction in '64 was the sale of a piece of property.
Let's say that this microphone and that microphone and this BlackBerry are burial sites. This one's occupied, that one's occupied, but that's vacant. In 1960, this one gets sold, and then it's between two occupied semi-city-owned burial sites. And so it really kind of gets goofy as who's got the responsibility to maintain? Do we maintain this one and this one and skip that one? Does the contractor come in, the private sector maintain this? So it creates some real interesting questions. Our perpetual care fund, which we'll cover tonight, is not big. It's only $1.5 million. And we'll cover that.
Currently, the city maintains a portion of the cemeteries, and then the Wimber has a responsibility to sell graves, dig graves, keep records, and schedule funeral services and coordinate with all the cemeteries. The city's piece of that is to cut the grass, remove flowers, do road maintenance, repair of grave sites, and trash and debris removal. Now, Mr. Rowe explained how important this was, that we made some changes in the way that we were managing our cemeteries, and what we did was we did a reorganization, and we found a vacant position and created a cemetery superintendent. I've got that person, Donna Barnes, stand up. She's, you've probably heard her name, she's out at the cemeteries every day. She is the person on the ground. She's the eyes and the ears on the ground. She's out doing work. She's cutting trees, she's removing brush, she's doing all kinds of things. And there's a lot of folks that are, cemeteries are close to their heart, that are here, could probably seen her out working, and can share that with you, the things that she's doing. I think that's a critical piece of the change that we've made, is putting somebody who's in charge of cemeteries every day. They wake up and they think about cemeteries. That's all they think about.
Trying not to go to one.
We also looked at the contracts that we had, and we realized that those contracts were not, that even though there was a frequency built in, if there was rain or this or that, the grass wasn't being cut on that schedule, and there's reasons why that occurs. But there was no flexibility to be able to go back and recover from that. So we met with the sheriff, and the sheriff agreed that he would take over grass cutting at the cemeteries. Now, there's been people who think that's somewhat sacrilegious to have a sheriff's crew out there working in the cemeteries. But what it does is it gives us a large number of people that we can be flexible, and we can, we can deal with rain, we can deal with, when the wind comes through and blows a lot of limbs out of the trees, we can get the work done in a timely manner. And the sheriff has given us a very equitable agreement to do that. We developed partnerships, and some of those partners are with us. We've, we'll talk a little bit about those folks in a little bit, but not only, I also see not just the folks who are working with us on Mount Calvary, but also see folks from Cedar Grove Cemetery Foundation. Raise your hand. Who else is with you, Ms. LaPelle?
Barbara Early and Margaret Winne.
And then we have Meg Breckenridge.
Well, we're going to, we've got to, we're going to talk specifically about the work they're doing in a little bit. Also, we've developed a plan to reach a seven-day cut cycle. I don't think we're ever going to get rid of complaints unless we get to a seven-day cut cycle. We're working on that now. We're trying very hard. We're adding additional folks to our crews. We added additional crew, actually, a couple weeks back, and we're monitoring that closely. But there's always, I want to be clear, that there's situations that come up, like last Friday, the crews were over there cutting, they had to leave because there was a funeral going on in the area, but we got a call, I think actually a complaint went to council this morning, that the grass was high. But they were there cutting this weekend, or on Friday, but they couldn't finish because of the cemetery was being used for a funeral, so...
What happened, and I drove through there a few weeks ago, Dennis, and you're...
right, to say there's grass there is, in some cases, Olive Branch Cemetery at least, is a stretch. But what's there was not well-maintained, and I can see the complaints. I can also see the complexity in trying to cut it with some type of mower, other than the weed whacker. Some places, I don't know how you would use anything else. But, this week, this weekend, the Mother's Day weekend, and I noticed that, I guess Friday, I was over that way, the portageon. You know, grass is one thing, but having a Mother's Day weekend, have a portageon, and I realize if you've got workers out there, and the law is, you've got to place a portageon. But what this place should be removed, knowing a holiday like that coming up and people going to be frequent in that cemetery.
We told, we noticed the same thing. And the order was given to move the portageon, and the ball was dropped. And so, it wasn't just a surprise to learn about the portageon today. Unfortunately, it did not get moved. But we've had the same problem with a backhoe. If you came down 10 days ago, down City Park Avenue, there was a backhoe parked for no good reason right there. And Dennis told them, "If you don't move that darn backhoe," and that's darn with a capital D, "we're going to have a towing company move it." And so, we share your passion and the concern. But, and our biggest challenge right now on lawn care is at Olive Branch. And it's primarily because it's weeds. And you'll see this in some photographs here. If, and Dennis was going to cover this, if all of us went into a partnership to go out to, let's say, Olive White, buy 30 acres of land and start a private cemetery, one of the first things we probably do would say, "No monuments. Everything has to be flush mounted." And the reason for that is that, for ease of maintenance. You get on your lawnmower, your gang lawnmower, and you go right across the monuments, and everything gets cut and nothing gets damaged. We have all sorts of monuments. Most of them are legal. There are some that are very illegal, and we'll cover that. And when they're illegal, it does a couple things. One, it takes away from the aesthetic standard that people expect. And then, two, it really creates a problem for maintenance. But let us go through, we have some photographs that show that. And I'm really sorry about that portageon. I mean, had I known it was out there Saturday afternoon, I would have moved it myself.
It's chained to a tree. I went out there and I-
Oh, did you?
Yeah. But also, we're very sensitive to the issue that you brought up. There's another section in the back of the cemetery where all the dirt that's been dug out of the graves is piled up in the back, and it's just a pile of dirt. And that's not something somebody wants to see when they come to the cemetery to visit a loved one, especially someone that's just been buried. So, we're looking at all those things, and we're trying to correct those. We've done a major cleanup. I think we took about 12 roll-off boxes, 12 big roll-off boxes out of there, full of debris and limbs and trees and everything we could find. We're regularly removing flowers and memorials. And I made a tactical mistake with this. I gave our staff direction to begin to enforce removing flowers without putting up signage. And that was, I realized that was a mistake afterwards. I've talked to a lot of individuals who felt like we should have given them information ahead of time, and we should have. I've taken responsibility for that. We're preparing signage now that clearly tells people what's acceptable and what's not acceptable in our cemeteries. We're reviewing existing codes and looking towards developing a reasonable schedule for implementation. We've stopped the removal of flowers until we have a good feel and people understand what our expectations are as a city for the cemetery. Because, quite frankly, over the years, it appears that we've had regulations, but they've not always been enforced. And we'll show you some pictures to see that. And then, the signage that clearly states what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. And all four of our city's cemeteries will have that signage, once that's approved. Now, Cedar Grove, I got an email just the other day, and it came from Cedar Grove Cemetery Foundation. And the email, the first part of the email said, "I've never seen the cemetery look this good." So I think we are, we're making strides towards improvement, but we're not there yet. Grass is seven to 10-day cycle, and you'll see that on all of our cemeteries. We're replacing historic markers that are, these are markers that are actually provided by the foundation. We remade the scatter garden. We've taken out some old stuff that needed to be removed because it didn't necessarily fit in the area where we were talking about shrubs and trees and bushes, and we've redone that. We're regularly repairing historic graves. When you get these graves, this old, they tend to cave in oftentimes because they didn't have vaults put in the ground like we do today. So there's cave-ins, and Donna's got material there, and they're constantly doing that on a daily basis. The graves themselves, brick mortar comes apart, and we're actually putting all that back together. And we've developed a good relationship with the foundation that oversees the cemetery. Then, in Oak Grove Cemetery, we're back, we're at about an eight, nine-day cycle now by the time we get back there. But our goal, again, is to get the seven-day on all of our cemeteries. We completed another major cleanup. We moved old brush and debris out of that cemetery, especially on the backside of the cemetery facing over towards the school and in the departee neighborhood. We placed fencing. There was some fencing that the weeds had run up so far, just, the fencing just fell over. Took the weeds off, pulled the trees out, put new fencing back in there, and we've ordered signage, or we will be ordering the signage for cemetery regulations. There's a lot of low spots in the roadway there, so when we have heavy rain, Oak Grove tends to flood. We're looking at trying to elevate that up without damaging any of the graves that are around it. And Olive Branch Cemetery, where today would have been the 10th day on that cut cycle, from the time they actually started, City Park last time, to the time they finished it. I think if you look at the way the grass looks there, you can see, as they move, each day they move, you can see the grass is a little bit higher. So, when they finish, the grass that they started on has already started growing. So, I'd like to try to find a way of getting all of that grass pretty much the same, because you could get a complaint at any time out there if the grass is not always the same length across the whole entire cemetery. And the reason for that is, is because it's a personal place. And if I feel like that this cemetery, this grave site over here got better treatment than my father's grave over here, then I'm going to, there's going to be a negative connotation out of that. We've completed a cleanup there as well, regular mowing, removing the flowers, removed grave digging equipment out of the way. That was, they were parking the grave equipment right on City Park Avenue. And we asked three or four times, and we finally got action. We told them we were going to actually tow the tractor if it didn't get moved. And they also cleaned up all of the debris where they had wood down there. It was, it just was unsightly. That makes a big difference. The back area, I just talked a little bit about that, where the work area is, where they dig the dirt out. We want to cover that up so people can't see that. And then, put new signage, not just signage for the regulations, but also the signage identifying it as Olive Branch Cemetery.
Go back.
Skip one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I did. And Mount Calvary Complex, and we're going to talk more about this in a few minutes, but I want to go over it because we just finished in there yesterday. We did finish yesterday, right?
Yes, we finished Friday.
We're putting, the roadway should be improving. We're putting some temporary material down now that come off of High Street, the Millings. We're trying to make it solid enough so we can get in it. Because one of the problems we have is, we can't get in there to remove trees, we can't get in there to do mowing, if we get any rain at all because the drainage is so bad. So, that's an important piece to get started on. We've completed a topographical survey. We paid someone to come in and actually tell us what the elevations are and how the drainage system should work in there. Removed the brush and debris. That's an ongoing effort. Don't think that this one time is going to go through, and you're going to see all the brush grain. This is years and decades of growth that we're trying to get removed out of there. And I think the folks from, who are working with us on this, our team that's working with us will tell you that there's a big difference today from the way it was a month ago. We've removed eight trees already that we're not even on the list of trees that need to be removed, but they were old and they were about to die. We're meeting with ERC to discuss drainage issues because the drainage there goes across the interstate. ERC is very interested in becoming partners and working with us to try to correct the drainage problems over there. And the unnecessary trees, we've got, I've met with the foundation with Ms. Breckenridge and the team that we're going to introduce in a little bit. And we identified, first of all, trees that were unhealthy. Then, two, trees that were damaging graves. And three, trees that had no useful purpose in the cemetery. And that means that they may be too close to a grave, and when the roots begin to grow, it pulls it up. So, it was a collaborative effort to identify these trees. And we've identified, I don't know how many trees would you say we've identified, 50? 50 trees probably that need to come out of there for one reason or another. So, this is going to be an ongoing effort here. But we've made a commitment to do the right thing here and get the cemetery, because there's so much history in that cemetery. If you've never been there, you owe it to yourself to go out and walk that property. It's just, it's amazing when you go through it. Current funding, we're going to talk, John already talked a little bit about the perpetual fund and being $1.5 million. Should appropriate annual earnings from the investment. And what that means is, whatever earnings we have from the $1 million base investment should be appropriated to cover expenses for cemeteries for the upcoming year. But the problem with that is, is insufficient, the million dollars is insufficient to create enough revenue to cover the cost for operating the cemetery for a year. Currently, there's, in the 2013-14 budget, $220,420. You're not going to find that, if you go digging through your budget, you're not going to find that because it's not a cemetery budget. It's broken up, and this group does this, and this group does this. But when you go through all of the budget and you pull out all the little pieces that are kind of deep down into the budget, that's the number we're working with. Where we really need to be at, to have world-class cemeteries, something that we can bring our tourism on, is around $470,000. So we have about, less than half of what we need in order to bring the cemeteries up, have a seven-day cut cycle, guarantee that we have fescue growing in our cemetery so that parks, that park-like atmosphere that we're looking for, that's what it's going to take.
What's the contract that you're doing with the sheriff? What is he charging per year?
Thirty cents. It's about $80,000.
So $80,000. Where is the other $390 we go?
Excuse me?
If you look at-
Here's, oh, of 470.
Yeah.
That's salary.
We're not there. Yeah.
We're at the 220.
I can explain that.
First, we want to increase the frequency of cutting the grass. And the key word there is grass.
Well, he's at $80,000 a year, right? For a seven-day?
That's his price at this point. But we still are going to need to add another deputy, which is around $40,000. Plus, one of the things is that they finished today, cutting grass, there's still all of these other tasks, the fencing that needs to be repaired. You've got trash cans that need to be emptied on a daily basis. You've got bushes that need to be trimmed. They're doing the main grass cutting and weeding. There's still all of these other things that need to be done. And we've identified what those were, and identified the number of people that we need in each one of those cemeteries to be able to do that.
Go back to the slide of Olive Branch. Go back. You know, what happens is that he'll start at one end, at, let's say, the east end, and work to the west end. And like Dennis said, is that in two days' time, you've got a different height elevation. And it creates a situation where it's never complaint-free, because somebody's always experiencing high weeds, not high grass. So we want to be able to, the ideal situation would be to blitz the whole cemetery and cut it at one time. Not cut it a day here, a day there, a day there, a day there, so it looks like a hodgepodge of different elevations as far as the weeds are concerned.
I'm a little unclear, okay? We're taking over the maintenance. Who was responsible for this prior to this occurring?
The city was responsible for it.
So we've always done it with exception of that 1964 piece. Is that an accurate statement?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we, that's the, that's the interesting thing about this, is that the, even though the burial lots got, the vacant ones got sold, and this tract of land, the city had the responsibility of maintaining all the grave sites.
Okay.
And I can't tell you how they did it in '70 or '80. They might have contracted it out. They might have had summer help in. And that's one of the things we looked at, or were looking at. Get somebody out there with a lawnmower, some person who wants a summer job and doesn't mind working hard and cut the doggone grass.
But John, I think one of the things we have to be very, be very realistic about, there was a time when this type of perpetual caring was not followed throughout the city in a systematic process. So some areas got further behind than other cemeteries in the city. And this plan will bring about some degree of equability in terms of the maintenance that's going on into the cemeteries, regardless to which part of the city they're in. And I think it's good because it's been needing to be addressed for quite some time. And I think we're on the right path, because you're looking at all of the issues. And in looking at that, every cemetery will be treated in an equitable order where it's pleasurable to the family and the relatives who are left behind.
And that's our goal.
And I like what you're doing with that.
Well, let's look what we're doing next year in the way of funding.
Okay, with the $280,000 that's proposed for, the proposed budget funds for the cemeteries for next year, we have a cemetery superintendent, we've lowered the contract price with the sheriff, and then the funds that we've been able to save by lowering the contract price with the sheriff, we will reinvest into the infrastructure improvements within the cemeteries. And that will be split across all the cemeteries, depending on their needs. And we have a document, do you have that document?
This one.
That document is a perpetual care, a 10-year plan for perpetual care that outlines all of the things that need to be done in the cemeteries. And that will be the starting point for us to begin to work and invest back in to trying to make the infrastructure in the cemeteries where it needs to be to support a thriving cemetery.
How much more time? I'm sorry. I yield, Bishop.
Is there any regulation in, that the city, is private cemeteries, is there any regulation that they have to abide by, that we can challenge them when they are negligent of keeping up?
I will let Mr. Rowe answer that, because he's dealt with that in another city one time, so.
Yeah. Invariably, if you have a poor cemetery operator, one that doesn't take full responsibility, they tend to walk away, and the community then says, "Wait a minute, we've got, somebody's got to step in." And typically, it's the local government. What happens is that through the due process, they just take possessing of the cemetery. The state, there are several different places in the state code, and George can tell you about this, but you don't find all the laws relating to cemeteries in one chapter. There are a few in 15.2, which is the chapter that deals with local government. There is a chapter that deals, Chapter 57, if I remember this correctly. And then, in 1998, the General Assembly enacted legislation to wipe out another whole chapter, but they delayed the effective date until the year 2000. And it's those regulations that really impact the private sector. And so, this is something that even the General Assembly has been wrestling with. And I only have to think, or guess, really, that they delayed, they enacted one year and delayed the effective date by two years to allow the industry to get prepared for the new regulations that came. And because we're a municipal operation, I'm not up to speed on all that new legislation that got enacted by the General Assembly for the private sector. And it comes down that we don't have many private cemeteries in the city. We have one that's really at risk in the near term.
Very much so. In my other line of work that I do, I go to different cemeteries. And that one is in a mess.
And we've been in there.
And I feel like something needs to be done or said.
It's just a smidgen better than the- It's just a smidgen better than the Mount Calvary complex, unfortunately. A smidgen.
A smidgen.
We're very aware of the conditions over there and where we are with that cemetery. So just hang on. That's going to be hopefully part of another presentation as we move forward.
How much time do we have before the public cemeteries are full?
That's a hard question.
I asked that question at the cemetery office just last week. And the best, without spending quite a bit of time trying to figure out where, we've got about 70% of the graves filled.
Okay.
That's a rough number that was given to me by the cemetery operator, the operator.
And it gets even more complicated. You know, think, some deaths you can predict, some are very sudden. And some people pre-plan and buy their cemetery lot, some people wait until the, you know, unexpected death. We don't control the prices of the burial lots. If we do, well, think about it, the ones, we sold them in 1960. But your city code does set the price of the grave opening and closing. Now, that would be like council passing an ordinance that says every gas station that does an oil change can't charge more than $15 for the oil change. And we spent Friday evening trying to figure out the logic for that. And I've nearly called George at about quarter to seven to see if he gave me that look. You know, what is the logic for us to control the grave opening on that triangle piece of land that's owned by a private entity? I can't tell you. I can't tell you that logic for it.
So basically, we could possibly only have 30% capacity left. What's the responsibility after that? What do we do as a municipality?
Only if, that's one of those things where it's a quasi-judicial function of government. You get to decide. If you don't want to be in the cemetery business, there's nobody that can make you start a new cemetery. But if you want to be in the cemetery business, then you have to do it right. And where it's gone with this pricing is that if you're shopping for the lowest price, we may, that 30% might be taken up by people looking for a cheap piece of land. It may be people, and what's funny is that we found regulations before, decades ago, that you had to live in Portsmouth in order to be buried in one of those cemeteries. But if the burial sites are cheaper than Chesapeake or Suffolk, this might be the place to go. You know, I don't know about you guys, but I'd shop for the cheapest gas station. And so, because we don't control the price, that 30% might go quicker.
That may be one of the justifications for the grave opening and grave closing is to try to keep it, to make us not be the cheapest game in town because otherwise we'll use up our capacity quickly and it really needs to be available, it needs to last.
That's a very good question, though.
I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, sooner or later, we're going to say, okay, no room at the cemetery. And what's the legal responsibility for a municipality at that point?
You don't, there's no law that says you've got to have one. But if you're going to have one, if you decide to have one, then you've got to follow the law to create it and operate it.
You'll have to keep, you'll have to maintain your old cemetery. But you don't have to, there's no requirement that you create a new one. Just the citizens will have to, you know, the families will have to go to other places. And there's a slowdown in the rate that they're being used because of the increasing popularity of cremation.
Sure.
So that's, and that's a different...
And that's an interesting conversation that we're having because the contractor tells me that we're the lowest in town for opening and closing fees, and that's causing folks to come here and buy their cemetery lots here so that they can be buried where it's cheaper. So I think...
Can we go on with the briefing? Because I think some of your questions may be answered. Go on, your briefing.
Some of the challenges that we face, two that we're going to talk about mainly are the compliance with the city code. I've got some pictures and some, the code is outlined so we can see where we have discrepancies at. And then, this is an excerpt from a report that was done as part of the city's perpetual care 10-year master plan. The serious drainage issues are persistent in this cemetery, and this is speaking specifically to the Mount Calvary complex. The amount of work to be done is far beyond what the perpetual care fund will ever be able to address. There is no way this project could be handled within the perpetual care fund or general operating budget. This will be a large project and will take numerous years to complete. But until we get past that, there's a lot of other challenges that we can't take pedal in there. Now, the city code says that there'll be no enclosures, flower beds, hedges, or borders. And we're going to, I'm not going to read all this to you, but I'm going to, if you take a look at, but I'm going to identify it on the pictures of things that are not acceptable.
An enclosure can be a plastic fence that somebody hits, it can be a series of little small rocks, anything that defines the grave site.
And this slide talks about the thickness and the size of all of the stones and headstones that can be used in the grave. And they're pretty specific about the sizes. And I think, the one I think is the most interesting, is the gravestone must be, a monument is any stone that projects more than 24 inches above the ground. A gravestone must be between four and 12 inches thick and then more than 24 inches. And all stones and monument foundations must be at least four feet into the ground. That's not the case in a lot of our cemeteries because I can tell you right now at Cedar Grove, the headstones just sink down the same way in Mount Calvary. So there's a lot of these that aren't being adhered to. Now, this is, this is an example of a grave that's in Olive Branch Cemetery. Oops. What did I do there?
Just use that.
Yeah, I just hit the wrong button.
Just use that. It'll click out in a minute.
Okay. This border was installed, and that's illegal. That does not meet the code.
There's a mailbox.
The, this is fallen over, it's grass growing in here, there's a mailbox here that was installed, this bench is illegal. The things that are legal in here are this headstone and this headstone. That's it. And the reason for that, and I think Mr. Rowe's already talked about that, is when you're mowing, when you're mowing, you want to go straight through. This requires you to stop and weed the whole entire thing. So everything's being done by hand around these, around these types of plots. Here, this is illegal according to the code, this brick. And that flower or bush cannot be planted where it's planted at.
There's no marker, dead grave marker at all.
This is, this at some point sat on top of this, but it's right in the middle between two sets of headstones. So when you bring the mowers through, you've got to go around and you've got to come back and you've got to weed it around that. Now, while this may be appealing to the eye, this is exactly, should be treated exactly the same as this because no borders are allowed. But over the years, it's been allowed. So how do you go back and tell someone who's paid to have a marble border put in that they have to take that out? So that's the challenge when we're dealing with the code. How do we address that? How do we go back and tell someone who's done this for their loved one that they'd have to take it out? And we've done some of that, pulling out trees that were planted in the wrong place. And I personally got the phone calls and tried to deal with those. So we've stopped until we can figure out how to move forward and get these regulations posted. And with that, here's just another one. This is, while it might look beautiful to have all that around there, it's really, that's hard to mow around and it's against the code. And also, this is against the code. And you'll see park benches out there in a lot of different places, specifically in the Olive Branch Cemetery. There's some park benches in Oak Grove and Cedar Grove, but they typically are stone and marble and they're part of the headstone arrangement. Now, Spencer Joseph is going to go over and start talking about Mount Calvary.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. I do want to mention that Dennis and Donna have really done the heavy lifting on this particular project. And I call it a project, it's ongoing, but they've done a lot of work. And, you know, they have really collaborated with our community partners, Pam Clappell with Cedar Grove. It's, you know, it's been great working with Pam as well as with May and that team. And I do want to talk about Mount Calvary complex and the team of volunteers that we have and what we plan on doing in the future with this particular site. The first goal we have is to restore the cemetery and the sanctity that it serves. If you go over to the cemetery, you will find grave sites that are just filled with water. They may have had a concrete top over, over top of the entire grave site, but that's been, you know, decayed, broken in, and the entire grave is filled with water. So we definitely want to work to restore that. Secondly, we want to have the cemetery placed on the National Register of Historic Places. That would be through the National Park Service as well as to develop the documentation that will identify the cemetery as one of America's historic and archaeological resources. In addition, we would like to have the cemetery become a part of the Network to Freedom. Now, and that's again through the National Park Service and also working to develop the documentation to support that activity. And then finally, we want to expand the cemetery with additional grave sites so that the sale of those grave sites would support the perpetual care fund. And here's what, here's what the group has been talking about. If you notice from the original chart that Dennis showed, you have the dark black outline of the existing cemetery complex. But now, the red line, we would look at absorbing that into the actual cemetery complex itself, put in a visitor's center, a small center, a place where plots can be sold, and then these would be opened up as well.
Where was the Holland property? I thought they had donated some property for the possible expansion. Is that, is that on this map?
Is this here? This area?
Okay, all that's part of the Holland property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, in terms of the collaborative community efforts, I do want to take time to recognize several people that are here tonight. First of all, May Breckenridge, if you'd stand up. May has actually allowed us to fall, allowed the group to fall under her 501(c)(3) with the African American Historical Society, who's supporting all of the efforts for actually fundraising and grant writing for these projects. The next one, the next group of two people I really would like to recognize, and that would be Nadia, Nadia, and Brenda Orton, if you guys would stand up, please, especially Nadia. She's actually done quite a bit of research on the cemetery. She has a blog out on the website. You can find Portsmouth Cemetery on the internet. She's done a lot of research on the people buried there. And she's actually putting together all of the documentation to apply for the National Register and the Network to Freedom. So these guys have done a great job. Grant writer Margaret Winley, and I'd like for Margaret to stand up. And what makes Margaret so special is that Margaret is actually a volunteer in both foundations. She works with Pam Clappell's group and she's come over to help now the Mount Calvary group with May Breckenridge. And she's been successful with, is it two or three grants so far? Is it, I know the headstone...
One. I'm waiting on a second.
Okay. And then the stone for the paupers field?
Oh, yes.
I did a very early one, too, with the Picora Foundation. They gave us a survey. So we've had several good things to happen.
With the register and the Network to Freedom, would that qualify for you for any funding?
We are hoping that once we, once the, and the big issue is the Fisher's Hill property. Once that is turned over to the city in July, then all of the applications can be made. Once we have the applications made and hopefully we're on those registers, then we can, then apply for grants and probably be far more successful with our applications.
What would the stone be for the paupers field?
I think they already have the stone.
It's there. It's on Facebook.
Okay.
It's there. She's on Facebook.
Okay.
And then, so I introduce Margaret, and then, I don't know, is Christina here tonight?
Christina's not here.
Christina Carlton has really done a lot of work in getting volunteers to clean up the property. And she's just been a godsend to that particular, to the group as well. Now, here's a timeline of our activity. In December, March, and April, we had meetings with the team. In April, there was a, was a successful grant for $4,000 to remove the decaying trees. And then in April, we also completed the aerial survey of the site. In July, we'll have the notice of hearing for the city to officially take possession of Fisher's Hill. And then that next step, as I mentioned, would be to make the application. And in the fall, we want to have all of the design documents, meaning that the project will be completely shovel-ready, all of the bid documents ready to go, so that the team can begin applying for grants and the city will know exactly what we need to move forward. Any questions?
I think mine probably is for Dennis. So when, when does the contract with the sheriff start and when you expect it to be on your, to meet your seven-day cycle?
It's already started, and our goal is to have a seven-day cycle in July.
In July, okay.
That concludes, again, in case you think about this presentation, if you have any questions, give us a call. If you hear anything, good or bad, let us know. All right. Our next presentation is a facilities condition study that we want to brief you on. And we're going to, Dennis, you're going to introduce?
I am.
All right.
Good evening again. I wanted to open up by stating something that in order to understand where you're going, you have to know where you've been. And some 17 years ago, we went to a retreat, a council retreat in Williamsburg, with this document. And this document was a facility study. And it's an access database that has every single building that the city has and the condition of those buildings at that time. And we laid out a plan to begin to address our maintenance backlog. And this has been a living and breathing document since that point. Each year, when we do our capital improvement, we go to this book and we, and we deal with whatever was the next priority. When I came to work with the city, we, whenever it rained, we would call all the maintenance staff in and they would all go to the buildings and they would put buckets under all the roof leaks that we had. That problem has gone away. We've developed a long-term plan. This is, its useful life is just about over with. And Alicia's going to brief you tonight on a facility condition index, which is taking this to a whole nother level. And it's what will guide us in our facilities over the next 15, 20 years until we get to a point where something new and great has come out. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia Hart, Assistant Director of General Services, to brief you on a facility condition index.
Thank you, Dennis. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Rowe. As Dennis said, tonight, I'm going to provide an overview of the facilities condition study that is currently being conducted by the Department of General Services. An overview of the presentation includes what a facility study consists of, what is the facilities condition index or the FCI, facility study schedule, the expected deliverables of the study, the implementation process, and the new work order management system. The scope of the study includes all city-owned facilities, including sub-facilities at each site such as storage buildings and pop houses. It does exclude all public utilities, all streets, sidewalks associated with the streets and the seawall. A full maintenance, excuse me, a full maintenance assessment of the facilities will also be taking place, which includes all items that need to be repaired or replaced, estimated cost of all repairs, and the estimated cost of facility replacement. There are eight components to a facilities condition study. Those components include regulatory compliance, site data, building structure, building interior, mechanical systems, electrical systems, transportation systems, and building safety systems. mechanical systems, electrical systems, transportation systems, and building safety systems. So essentially, what is a facilities condition index? It is a tool that is used to help establish repair priorities for our facilities. There's a calculation that goes into the FCI, which is the total repair cost divided by the total replacement cost multiplied by 100, which gives you a percentage. An example of FCI calculation is, uh, cost to repair, say, is $100, and the cost of replacement is $1,000, then you end up with an FCI of 10%. So our recommendation would be to repair whatever deficiencies are within the facility. However, if you end up with an FCI that's of 90%, then our recommendation more than likely would be to replace the facility. The FCI also provides a standardized method for comparing the condition of multiple buildings. The FCI began in April of this year. All assessments should be completed by October of this year, and then the findings will be presented in December of this year in time for preparation for next year's budget. There are two main deliverables of the assessment study. Uh, the first is the summary report by facility, which lists all the categories that we assess. It gives an estimated repair cost for the facility, and then it'll also give an estimated cost for constructing a new facility. The next deliverable is an actual detailed report by facility. This report lists all the components of the FCI, all the deficiencies by the building, and this information feeds into the summary report. The implementation of the FCI will occur through the capital improvement plan and also through the maintenance staff utilizing our new work order management system. Currently, we are using the George Butler Associates Master Series Suite, or GBA system for short. We are nine versions behind with this software, and the newest version of the software is not compatible with our current version. The system is overly complicated even for our highly-trained personnel. The system is server-based and does not provide transparency to our customers who are the building occupants. In an effort to address the issues with the current system, we will implement a new work order management system in July of this year. The new system is called Facility Dude. It is a cloud-based platform. Once implemented, departments will actually have the ability to submit work requests on their own, and they will also have access to a personal dashboard that is available to them. And this dashboard will essentially, uh, tell them the status of all work requests that they have submitted, when work requests are completed as well. They will also get emails once the status of a work request has changed, from, say, for instance, from submitted to approved to work in progress, all the way through when it's completed. The system is much more user-friendly than our current system. It provides immediate, as I said, status work updates, and, um, it supports the tracking of all corrections that are noted in the FCI. There are key features to the work order systems that we feel are beneficial to our customers. One of the great, uh, features is that it's a simplified process for entering work orders. It's a total of about seven steps from start to finish, all on screen, for a work request to be submitted. Other key features include the ability to upload a picture of the actual problem and attach it to the work request. That allows the maintenance staff to physically see what is wrong and allow us to address the issue sometimes much quicker than having to report out to the building, then assess it, and then get the materials or the staff that we need. Also with the new system, the customer can keep track of their work order statuses, and we will receive emails in real time regarding the status of the work orders. The customer will also be notified once the work order is completed. Key, excuse me, key features of the system for the maintenance department include significantly improving our work order maintenance system, the ability to track work order progress and cost in real time is also a significant benefit to our department. The new system also provides an effective management tool for preventive maintenance and allows us to establish performance standards for maintenance.
What's the cost of the new system?
$17,000, uh, 600, excuse me, I have been, $17,670 a year.
How many users?
How many users? As many users as we would like to add.
You gotta maintenance fee every year?
Yes, the annual subscription cost is the $17,000.
$18,000 a year? $17,700?
$17,670.
Okay.
Amazing.
It's not bad.
Yes.
It's not bad.
Now, just think about the compound, the number of buildings there.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, if we've got an issue, we want to hear about it quick, so we can, particularly if it's a water issue, a leak issue.
Do we have any idea what the deferred maintenance situation's like now?
Not much time.
Pretty, pretty significant. You know, one of the things, unfortunately, for public entities is defer maintenance, and you end up with a big, big cost.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like this system will, uh, at least give us a handle to, uh, not let it-
Yes, sir.
-get any farther out.
Right.
Any other questions on this one? Thank you.
All right. Uh, David and Patrick, if you'd be in the ready rack, that y'all can come up. One of the things that came out of your, uh, retreat last year was the loud message that you wanted to see more events, uh, in the city. And, uh, we took that and we're running very hard with that. I sent you a memo, uh, last week on the, um, events that are taking place in May. Now that we've gone from, uh, almost overnight from winter temperatures to summer temperatures, and had a good gospel art festival yesterday, uh, I wanted to bring you up to date on some of the events that are underway and that will take place the rest of this year. Uh, we're in the process of negotiating a new contract with IMG. You know this. And one of the things that, two broad things. One, we want this gate that's right outside this window to be, in the default position, to be unlocked and open so that we have access to the River Plaza. And that's the plaza that's, uh, next to the marina at Ocean Marine. Second, we want more performances at the pavilion, uh, in the spring, summer, and in the fall. We want as many performances as the weather will permit. Now, IMG picked up on that, and they started a, a May program that's free, and it's called Chilling at the Pavilion. And let me tell you about, uh, the concept. The concept was to put it right on the plaza so that people coming around the roundabout could see it. It could be a mousetrap to, to trap them. That first Thursday night in May, if you remember, was a challenging weather night. In fact, it looked like it was going downpour. And so, uh, the event, um, handlers moved the stage, literally, from the plaza to under the pavilion. And we ended up probably with 100, I mean, uh, with 50, uh, at that performance. The second performance was last Thursday. Remember what that last Thursday was? It was a hot, summer-type day. No clouds in the sky, uh, no shade to speak of. I get a text message that, from Nita. I had been out there earlier. I had another function. I had to go to the maritime, uh, dinner. Uh, 150 people showed up. And because of the turnout, uh, IMG is looking at continuing this in June. That'd be good. Now, let's, let's jump June and go to, uh, July. Uh, Brandon is working with the Tidewater Concert Band, which is a, a band that plays, typically you see him at Memorial Day on the sidewalk right, right next to Trinity Church, to do a Fourth of July concert at the old Holiday Inn site, Holiday Inn site, uh, playing the, among other things, the last piece being the 1812 Overture, so that as the end of the piece comes, the fireworks go off. How cool is that?
It should be beautiful.
It should be.
On that waterfront.
And then, uh, that same weekend, we've, um, are gonna bring a circus to town. But it's a circus that no one has ever seen before, the likes of here in Portsmouth. And I'm gonna ask David to, uh, to tell you about that circus. You got, Bill's got it in his hands, and so does Curtis.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. Mr. Rowe, earlier this year, challenged city staff to create a series of new events, and I must say, Parks and Recreation has done a terrific job in putting together a whole series of new events down at North Landing. Nita has led the effort to get these great new events here at IMG they're gonna be putting together. But he wanted me to come and just tell you a little bit about this, this special one. If you have a copy of the handout. Caravan Stage Company contacted us last winter. They are a very unique organization. They started back in the 1960s as a traveling circus troupe that went through the prairies of Western Canada. In the 70s, they decided to purchase a ship, and for the past 40 years, they have been traveling from Harbor Town, from Harbor City to Harbor City, putting on what they call the indescribable theater of the arts. And we are delighted that they will be coming here over Fourth of July weekend. They specifically chose Portsmouth because as they were looking about their tour schedule up and down the East Coast, they felt very drawn by our nautical heritage and our position here in the center of Hampton Roads. On the backside is a little bit of information about what residents will experience. This first photo at the upper left actually shows the ship being prepared for the show. Most of the show takes place in the upper rigging. And then the, the photo just below that shows an actual photo from the show itself. They will be tying up at High Street Landing, and residents and visitors are gonna be invited to bring their own chair and to observe this entire terrific show. Based on what we've seen and some of the folks we've talked to who've experienced it, it's sort of certe du soleil on a ship. So we're very excited about the fact they're going to be here doing performances on the evening of July 5th, 6th, and 7th, and, uh, we're looking forward to drawing very good crowds. Any questions?
This is really unique.
Yeah.
This is neat.
And, uh, in fact, David's gonna be meeting with the Old Town Business Association, the Mar, to, uh, get sponsorships, uh, for this, and, um, also met with the Portsmouth Partnership.
So the ship is a stage?
Uh, absolutely. Yeah, it is. Um, and then that segues to the partnerships that we're trying to create to underwrite costs like these.
As you can imagine, um, events, uh, whether they be large or small, are, are generally not insignificant costs. This one's relatively affordable. It's about $10,000. That includes the cost of diesel fuel that the company writes into its contract. But a lot of this, we've been doing out of our existing budgets. So as we're growing these events, uh, we're finding money within our current budgets to make them happen. We all know what the upcoming budget year looks like. So one of the things we really want to find a way to do is get the community more involved in some of these events. This is free. You bring your lawn chair, uh, general public, you come, there's no cost to you. But we'd like to reach out to groups like Portsmouth Events, uh, which does the farmer's market quite ably now, uh, and possibly others, and grow that opportunity for sponsorships to come into the community. So we went to the Portsmouth Partnership today, mentioned this event. When we talking to OTBA tomorrow, we're really looking for that 501(c)(3) vehicle that can help us have an organization like some of our neighbors does that gets the business community involved. And in the case of this sponsorship, uh, we'll be offering, uh, to the signature sponsor tours of the ship, so 12, uh, individuals, front row seats, tours of the ship, little things like that can make it attractive as well as for companies to get their name out there. So that's another piece of the, of the initiative we're working on.
I'm glad to see this come back because at one time, we had very busy waterfront.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I guess I'm young enough to remember when, because I was down here finger-popping during that time, too. But the thing was, that waterfront was full with people, activities of all ages, the faith-based group, the young people and everybody. Every weekend, they were there, rain or shine. They found a way to get there, enjoy our waterfront. But then something came up and some negatives and turns of probably people roaming around. I wanted to make sure we focus on this in a way that we say to the populations within our city, "You are welcome to our waterfront."
Good.
That's going to be the key.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they used to pack the waterfront down here, and the people would even bring the babies and all down, and we walk on the waterfront. And it was beautiful. I'm glad to see it because Norfolk came right along and did the same thing on the other side, and they boom with it. When we had started it over here, we let it go. We could've had it all over here, including the tour ships.
You gave us the direction, and we're, we're running, and we wanted to tell you.
Yeah, this is good. This is a good start.
This is dynamite.
Yes, sir. Uh, Lavoris, can you tell us some other events that are taking place? Uh, also, Chilling at the Pavilion includes a Saturday night movie. Uh, the third movie is coming up this Saturday. Uh, the first night, we had 125. You took your young niece there, uh, was The Princess and the Frog. Uh, Frozen is coming up next, uh, which, um, is, I understand, a real good movie. Um, so if you're looking for something to do on Saturday night, come, come down here.
Now, IMG is, uh, putting these on?
Right.
Okay.
And it, it is free. And it was neat. The concession stand is open, like, on Thursday, so people will go over, get a tray of nachos, come and stand, watch the band, sit down, whatever. What else we got lined up?
Well, as you encouraged us to do, we're working our partnerships with not only, um, people in Portsmouth, but within the region as well. Um, part of our partnership includes working with the Downtown Norfolk Council. Of course, we have a ongoing, continuous partnership with them, so we share information with them on the other side of the water about what's happening in Portsmouth with, um, Mary Miller and Noel Grammich of the Downtown Norfolk Council. Also, the, um, Fine Arts Commission awards, um, funds to different groups that bring events to Portsmouth, and we're doing that right now with the Virginia Arts Festival. Of course, the Virginia Arts Festival is a regional thing, but we have two things, uh, two events that are happening here in Portsmouth on May 15th, the coffee concert, and also the evening chamber music on the 19th. So we still have that partnership with the, uh, Virginia Arts Festival. And of course, if you've noticed, you've gone up and down High Street, we have our Virginia Arts Festival banners there that indicates that we're still part of that, um, relationship. Of course, at the end of the month, uh, Umoja Festival, Parks and Recreation puts that on every year, and that will happen. The, um, Elizabeth River Run, which is another partnership with, um, um, the museums and Fine Arts Commission that are working to bring that event here. And of course, on Monday would be the traditional 130th Annual Memorial Day Parade in Portsmouth. So, uh, as you encouraged us, and as we got the directives from Mr. Rowe, we're currently working all of those partnerships to make sure that there's a lot happening in Portsmouth, and, um, you'll learn more about it as we move forward.
Now, we, I challenge them, we've got several different markets, but one market is Hampton Roads. We want people who have never been to Portsmouth to come, and we're getting great success with First Fridays, uh, that typically takes place at the intersection of Court and High at the museum. Now, this museum numbers, the museum keeps track of the number of people who come in. Uh, the first First Friday, we had 600 people. 600 people go inside the museum. Uh, last Friday, we had 500. And it was right interesting, uh, my wife and I were in the courtyard, and this couple comes up, and they're from Virginia Beach, and they're probably about half our age, so that gives you a demographic. And they said, "We never knew. Where's a good place to eat?" And so I'm telling Nancy Perry this last week. I said, "About 10 paces over, this couple came up." Well, boom, just like that, as if on cue, the same couple came back up. This is their second visit to Portsmouth. The, and do you have that piece lined up?
Which piece?
Okay.
Video.
The video. Um, one of the things that we're promoting with the tolls is that Portsmouth is the right side of the river, and it's a tagline that you've seen very subtly on the budget. Uh, and this is a piece that we've done that's playing on, uh, on TV, if we can get it to run. We can't get it to run?
Can we get the air adjusted?
It's very good.
I don't think they have the windows.
Can we get the air adjusted? It's 77 degrees in here.
Dennis, can you get-
I just did.
Okay, we got it.
Yeah.
You want to do a moment, man?
I know, I'm just like-
All right, so anyway, uh, public art. Uh, we're having a, a contest for, uh, artists to paint the, uh, signal boxes at the foot of, uh, High Street. The one at the courtyard is, uh, at the courthouse is wrapped. Uh, remember, it was on the trendy side of the church. We moved it across the street.
Yes.
And now you can't even tell that it's a signal box. So we're trying to make this a, a very festive place.
That, that looks very nice, by the way.
Thank you. What I'd like to do, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor and ladies and gentlemen, is now switch to a briefing on the regional jail. I sent you a memo last week about Chesapeake, uh, having petition to become a member. And this is really an important thing, because, uh, if, if they become a member, it's gonna bring down the per diem charge. down the per diem charge, and that's important as we look to the future. Brandon?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As John mentioned, on Friday, the jail authority met and voted unanimously to extend an offer to the city of Chesapeake to become the fifth member of the regional jail authority. As you know, the original members are Portsmouth, Norfolk, Newport News, and Hampton. And as the last couple of fiscal years have evolved, and we have had this excess capacity because there have not been any ICE inmates, or ICE detainees, I should say, we kept seeing a shrinking revenue base, a growing capacity. That was the resource and the need that we had. City of Chesapeake had a need for bed space. They had an overcrowding problem, they had a facility that they built and later got only a temporary certification from the state, and that really followed General Assembly Special Legislation. So they have a very short-term ability to serve their need for bed space, and they wanted something permanent. So that was their need, looking for permanent space. Our need was looking to fill the space that we have with a revenue generating entity. And so we began the process of negotiating with the city of Chesapeake, really at the beginning of the calendar year. And that really culminated in late April with reaching the conclusion of the deal as it stands right now, and the jail authority taking action on Friday to approve that. The city of Chesapeake is taking action tonight to approve that. And from here, it will work forward into a more specific agreement to put it in place. But the basic elements of this deal are this, we are going to receive from the city of Chesapeake a buy-in, a capital buy-in. That started really as two components, an equity buy-in and a reserve buy-in. We just blended that together, and eventually that was negotiated to a $3 million buy-in that they will pay over three fiscal years. The other component is the per diem. They will pay the same per diem as Norfolk, Newport News, and Hampton, and that's $65 for FY15. Portsmouth will still get its 10% discount as it negotiated at the beginning of this process 15 years ago because we're the host city. So our per diem for next year will be $58.50, or 10% less than the $65 that the other four cities will be paying. Another component of the deal was how quickly we're going to get Chesapeake to ramp up their inmates. And that was really important to us because the sooner they can get those empty beds filled and are paying the, into the authority, the per diem, the easier it is for us to balance the budget without having to raise the per diems for the original four members. And so ultimately, what we agreed on was they would put in 50 inmates on July 1 of this year, and each quarter thereafter add an additional 25. So they will eventually get to a guaranteed capacity of 250, just like Portsmouth and Norfolk have a guaranteed capacity of 250, although it will be July 1 of 2016 before they reach that. As John mentioned, this is really a critical decision for us to be able to avoid a significant per diem increase for the original four members of the authority. Back in late December, early January, we were talking about a $25 per diem increase for the four members. We brought to you in February a recommendation that you reduce the policy for a reserve for the jail authority as it serves four members and now five. We didn't see the need to have a three-month fund balance requirement, so we reduced that to two months. So that brought the impact of the rate increase from 25 down to $18. But bringing Chesapeake in is what really reduces our per diem increase, if you can couch it in such terms, down to a $10 increase for next year. And that's what we've got built into the budget right now that you're considering, and we wouldn't be able to do it without having Chesapeake come to the table. So the next steps are this, assuming the Chesapeake City Council endorses what its staff has negotiated with the authority tonight, the next step will then be to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the authority and the city of Chesapeake because we want their inmates as soon as we can get them, and that will be July 1st. We know it will take a much longer time to negotiate the service agreement, which each city council has to approve. And we knew we couldn't get that done in 60 days, so we said, let's get this MOU done, which basically certifies the essential parts of the agreement. And then the authority, through its attorney, will begin to draft a new service agreement, a new creation agreement, and a new set of bylaws. The bylaws are the only piece that each city council will have to approve, but the other two pieces, being the service agreement and the creation agreement, will have to be approved by each city council by resolution. And we anticipate that'll take longer than July 1 to get accomplished.
What is the budget now per year that we give to regional jail?
Let's see. The total budget for the regional jail is, for FY15, is $36 million. And our piece for our guaranteed 250 is $4,275,063.
Is that with the $10 increase?
That is before the $10 increase. After the $10 increase, it will be $5,338,125.
So about a $1.1 million increase?
The next...
Is there a cap on this? I mean, does, can they still go up every year? I mean, the burden back to our taxpayers?
Yes, absolutely. There's no cap on the per diem cost. I mean, it's, it is what it is, what it takes to cover the cost of operation and the debt service on the facility. And what's happened is that the rate did not go up that much because this regional jail really enjoyed the benefit of having federal prisoners there from the immigration folks. Those prisoners have gone away. They now go to a private facility in the west of here. And so it's not having those federal prisoners which has caused the jump in the price, in the cost to us, not only to us, but to Norfolk and to Newport News and to Hampton also.
What are we paying to, for the inmates that the sheriff has?
Our total budget for the jail, let us get that number for you. We can look it up tonight.
Because, I mean, you really need to combine both of them, what we're really paying per year for inmates, correct?
Well, yes and no. Yes, if you want to know the total cost, but what happens with regional jails, typically they get the most costly prisoner.
Medical.
Medical.
That's our expense.
If you've got a real bad apple, you want them out of your jail. If you've got someone that's got a real bad health problem, you don't want them in your jail. And so consequently, the regional jail ends up with the most expensive prisoners, and primarily, like the Vice Mayor Page said, because of the health issues. If you've got somebody with TB, for example, you don't want them...
You don't want them in here.
In your local jail.
It'd still be good to get in those numbers just so you can make the comparison.
I think another good comparison would be how our cost compared to Western Regional.
Western high water.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. I like to, I like to see that total cost plus the per diem cost.
That was, you know, really an important part of this whole negotiation process. Chesapeake had an array of choices, and we are really just filling one part of their need. They, they have much more than 250 inmates, and they are putting them in other places, and they're trying to get the most they can out of their dollar. So they're looking at, they're looking at Western High Water, they're looking at Virginia Beach, they're looking at any place that can sell them a bed as cheaply as possible. The thing that we had to offer them was permanence and stability. They can, they can see a more gradual rate for housing their inmates at the regional jail than they, than they can in sort of managing a day-to-day placement in other facilities.
I thought you were going to say a better apple pie or something for the inmates. On the federal prisoners, is that, is that a competitive situation? Is that why they, they've gone elsewhere? Or what drove the feds to move federal inmates from our facility?
They had the best deal on the table at the time, and that's where they put them. And they entered into a longer-term agreement, so there's...
Where did, where did they go?
It is a private prison, and I keep thinking Brunswick, but it's not Brunswick County.
It's south.
Okay, so it's way out west.
460, so that's where Longwood is.
Longwood County.
Cedar County, maybe.
Farmville.
Farmville.
Farmville, yeah.
This is significant because the way it was going, we were going to have to make some, some real tough decisions about the future of housing prisoners.
That's right.
With that immediate $2 million debt, it was going to keep escalating each year, so you need to get the ink dried on this one quick. Where...
Ink, ink dry, quick.
Where do we, where do we go from here as far as the jail population? When you do this, we do this new MOU and do this new country, what's that mean to us? Are we locked in for, what does it mean? Are we locked into the regional jail for this period of time, forever? What does it mean to us?
Well, you're asking, the MOU actually will just say we're going to start taking Chesapeake inmates. The service agreement is the agreement that each jurisdiction commits to a guaranteed placement of inmates in the jail and then some excess capacity.
What number years on that? That's what I'm asking, what's the number years on that?
You have to go back to the creation documents because when the jail came together, they had a, they had legal documents that everybody had to execute because in order to build the jail, they issued bonds. And so it's not just, you wake up one morning and say, I'm going to leave the regional jail because your responsibility to pay off the bonds is still there. You might try to leave, but you won't leave free.
But there's got to be a number in there.
Yeah, well, what year does this?
A year's in there, there's got to be.
Look at that.
It can't, it can't be eternity, it's got to be in there. I wonder what that number is.
You're talking about the Chesapeake agreement with the regional?
Our agreement. Is there a term date for our participation in the service agreement? I don't think there is, but we'll look at it. And of course, by reopening the service agreement, by bringing Chesapeake in, we have the opportunity to change any part of that. It's just got to be mutually negotiated.
Because we got to look at long-term here.
You figure a million a year in 10 years is going to be costing us...
How about our 10% host fee? Is that negotiable?
When you factor in, when you get that number, you're asking for the comparison on what we paying the regional and what we paying for our own jail. We can, we can do the crunching to see what's the most advantageous for us when we all gone, long-term. So that's all I wanted, and we need to do that.
If the agreement is, if the whole agreement is up on the admittance of Chesapeake is the host discount, can that be indexed to inflation, Consumer Price Index?
We can, we could negotiate that.
You know, Portsmouth's always been a host city for things, got the short end of the stick.
Exactly.
So this might be an opportunity to, in the time of its existence to the present day, I think we deserve some increase due to inflation during that period, so what can they say? Yes or no? I would say we try to, try to negotiate a higher discount.
We will.
And this is what we got to look at, as you said, they're looking at high water region and some other places. If the deal is better in high water region or wherever, and they can go other places, and we don't, and if Chesapeake isn't locked in for the long-term, we could be right back in the same position we were in prior to them coming in a couple of years.
Sure.
And we need, we need to know all that.
When was the last time we had an increase?
No guarantees.
Just past fiscal year, we increased it $4 in FY14.
And now we're going to 10, so we're doubling.
We're increasing at 10, you could buy 10 more dollars.
Right.
That's correct. They're forecasting the next rate increase, they just gave us the revised numbers today, would be a $2 increase in FY17. So we'll have a year reprieve of no increases as it's forecast right now.
But to Bill, to Bill's point, you know, in other type agreements, not necessarily regional jail, and he negotiated some from other cities, the whole city got some, got some better deals that they didn't have to worry about, you know what I'm talking about?
I do.
Talking about the landfill.
Yeah, that they didn't have to worry about these kind of increases. And as the whole city is, as Congressman was just talking about, we got to look into those kind of things for the long-term and not just, we got to go and negotiate.
But we aren't going to sell the city short. None of us want the city to be so short. We didn't get here by not working together, trying to come up with some kind of...
You understand what I'm saying?
I know where you're coming from.
I agree.
Okay.
And we don't want to give the city away either. We've been here when we went into those situations.
Because this not, this is...
We don't want it.
This is forever. I mean, we're going to have, where we lack or not, we're going to have those institutions forever, and we got to make sure we can afford it.
And it's timely because I had a special call meeting on Friday morning, as I let you know. And then Chesapeake is acting tonight, so it was really important, we thought, to brief you on what the status is. And we'll get the information that you, and it's logical, it makes sense, 100%.
And nothing is set in stone.
All right. Any more questions or directions on that one? All-American City, we're getting down to the time that we need to plan for our trip to, and I want to take this opportunity to once again tell you what lies ahead. We only have one member of council that has indicated desire to attend. Ross, let me...
Good evening, Vice Members of Council. As John stated, you all are aware that we were selected as one of the 25 finalists to go to Denver, Colorado in June, that is June 13 through the 14, to present on our application and hopefully come home with the award as an All-American City for 2014. We sent you all a letter on last Friday asking members of council if they wanted to attend with our delegation, it's about a 15-member delegation committee comprised of city staff, citizens, and other nonprofit organizations or business partners within the community to go in, talk about our projects, and hopefully bring home that award. And as John said, only one council member has responded so far. We're hoping that more maybe possibly will come to attend and help us present on this award. So if any of you are interested, please let me know because we're getting down to the wire in terms of needing to register for the hotel, get group discount on the flights, and also register for the award ceremony.
What's the date of that?
The date of it is June 13 through the 15.
June 13.
Through the 15.
Maybe we ask you, we're going to ask anyway. Think about it overnight, and let us know tomorrow.
We're trying to be better conscious there, John.
Colorado.
Colorado.
All right, thank you. Now, this leads, brings us to the last item on the agenda, and if we can tee it up, I think we're ready. On the agenda tomorrow night is a budget ordinance, and it's a big one. And because of its size, it requires a public hearing. The state code says that if you either meet a percent or a dollar amount threshold, you've got to have a public hearing. And this for sure exceeds this, primarily because as we've told you in the memo that went out, but in prior briefings, we've got to appropriate the bond proceeds from the pension obligation bond. Carol?
Good evening. As John mentioned, we will be having a public hearing tomorrow night because the total of these post-adjustments exceed 1% of the budget. However, even though the total adjustment is large, these really are housekeeping adjustments, the, and I'll go over them. The largest one, obviously, is the pension obligation bond proceeds which are transferred to... to the city's retirement plan administrator, New York Life. And unlike most bond issues where the uses of the bond proceeds are sort of below the line as another financing use, this is treated from an accounting requirement as an expenditure. It's essentially like paying one big ARC payment. So we need to appropriate the use of those proceeds. And while we are accounting and making changes for the pension obligation bonds, the debt service will change because money that we had previously budgeted as ARC will now go to pay debt service or a portion of it. And we are proposing with this budget, and we'll also make this change in your fiscal year 15 adopted budget document or ordinance, to, to use, again, we have a debt service fund that, I guess in some years past, have been used to account for all the debt service costs in one place, and we think that that would be more helpful and more transparent in, in tracking the total amount of debt costs citywide. So in order to do that, we have to appropriate the, the money in the debt service fund as well as the transfers from the other funds to the debt service fund.
Is that, is that for all or just?
That's for all funds. The general fund portion is 25.6 million plus about $9 million in ARC that is now going to be going to the pension obligation bonds.
And see, this will allow the reader, the public, anybody, to go to one spot and see totally what the debt service is.
And they'll see what's going where?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Exactly.
Which was good.
Transparency.
The third adjustment is to appropriate asset forfeiture monies that have been received for the Commonwealth Attorney, Sheriff, and the Police Department. We also have an adjustment for the Health Insurance Fund. You may recall when we briefed you on health insurance last year that we mentioned in prior years, in fiscal year 10 and 11, for whatever reason, the city transferred money, a total of $5.5 million over those two-year periods, from the Health Insurance Fund to what they called the OPEB fund, but there really was not a trust or any planned use of that money. It's just been sitting there ever since the first transfer was made. And in reality, that Health Insurance Fund needs to have an adequate fund balance to allow for any fluctuations in claims beyond what we estimate. And as we mentioned last year, we have had a few, number of our plan participants who unfortunately have had some very serious medical conditions, which has caused us to have some unexpected increases. So we're proposing to transfer 2.5 million of that money that's in OPEB back to the Health Insurance Fund to cover costs for this year. And as we are making recommendations to you with OPEB overall, we will make recommendation for what to do with the remaining balance in that fund. Behavioral Health Services Fund, we are proposing that $1.5 million of their fund balance be used to pay for technology and furniture costs for the new VHS building. And so that's a transfer from the VHS fund to the Capital Improvements Fund.
That doesn't take away from anything?
No, none of these have any, I mean, they'll, they'll increase the bottom line of the budget, but there, there's no additional funds that would be needed. And we mentioned, I believe at a meeting last month, that Judy Duffy and Carol White have done a tremendous job, particularly Judy, in going through the Capital Improvements Fund, scrubbing all the projects, looking at where we had revenue sources that in the past had been budgeted that were, were not ever going to be realized, and where projects needed to be closed out, and on the flip side, where there were projects that needed additional funding. So we are recommending the changes that result from that, that review and adjustments. We, we are transferring money between projects and the CIP to the tune of $7.1 million. And in addition, we're appropriating additional revenue of $3,385,000. And of that, 1.5 million is the transfer from the VHS fund. Also within the general fund, we're moving money within the fund, but most, almost all of that relates to moving that debt service money to, transfers out to the other funds. We, as I mentioned earlier, we are moving also the money that had been budgeted as ARC, which will now be used for debt service for the bonds. And we have spread out the cost of the, of the 3% general wage increase that was granted last July 1. And that, that concludes the overview of the adjustments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
When are we getting into the budget again? I mean
Tonight.
Did you ask that question?
Tonight and tomorrow.
When do we vote on it?
You have something, we don't ratify it until the 27th.
27th.
Of May.
Is there something specific?
Tomorrow's, tomorrow night's another public hearing on the
CIP.
Yeah, CIP. How about the operating?
I've had no questions from council. I think we answered all the questions that were asked of us.
I mean, from the public?
Keep in mind, they can sign up as non-agenda speakers still tomorrow.
Is the public aware that they can also comment on the operating tomorrow?
Probably not.
We, we need to make them aware, I feel.
The only time they'd be able to speak on it is doing non-agenda speakers. So that would, you're probably going to get those anyway. We're already, we've already been called in anticipation of people that are definitely aware that they're coming to speak tomorrow as non-agenda speakers.
I know the redevelopment housing has a couple of projects that they are looking for funding. I don't have the list, but may I bring them tomorrow? But I know we're cutting their funding down to 263,000. And it's a couple of pieces on High Street, they need to get funds to, so they have large portions versus when into the, I'll have, I'll give you the actual addresses tomorrow.
All right.
Okay.
Remember, if they, if they use community development block grant funds, that comes with a commitment to meet national objectives. And if you don't meet the national objectives, then the money has to go back to HUD.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of the budget, the schools, where we, where we stand now with, you know, I see that they passed a resolution where I think another million and some dollars coming back to the city. And I'm hearing that they're certainly getting low on money. When are we going to start returning some of that based on justification of needs?
Well, remember, the only way that, their budget was adopted by you.
Yeah.
Okay, the only way they could be getting low on money if they overspent their budget.
That's right.
They overspent their budget. And remember, you actually gave the schools additional money over what I recommended to hire personnel.
Teachers.
That, that
That weren't hired.
They were not hired.
But with, with that said, you know, I guess what I'm getting at, this, this, this back and forth and comparing numbers and then returning money, which obviously I don't understand, if you, if you've got needs, why are you giving it back? Why aren't you justifying what you need to spend it on? But with that said, what communication, I guess I'm asking, has been going on at this point?
Well, you're aware of every bit because I've been copying you all.
Yeah.
And the responses have been very, very slow. In fact, I've sent the superintendent an email on the 18th of April asking for documents, and technically, that's a Freedom of Information request. That email got ignored until late last week. And Carol ended up having a two-hour meeting on Friday with Chris Steele, their, I don't know what Chris's title is, interim CFO.
Deputy Superintendent for Budget.
Yeah. But it's such, you know, there's, will you pass that out? There's this notion about the activity funds, okay?
Heard a lot about that.
All right. And remember, my response was this, that this is an unbudgeted gift that came from the school administration last year. It was $725,000 that came in March. You'll see an email there from Nero, and it's directing the, the money to the schools for use for athletics in the high school and for band. Now, you can do the math. You've got March, May, half of March, you've got April, you've got May and half of June. They end up not spending all that money. Now, this $725,000 was not in their operating budget. Okay, so at the end of the year, the state code is clear, that money has got, it's unspent, it's got to come back to, to the city. You can use it for anything that you want. And I'm recommending that you reappropriate the, the funds back to the schools. It was unbudgeted last year, it's unbudgeted this year. That's one penny on the tax rate.
Absolutely.
Okay, when, when is this, Camila?
So it will be re-appropriated
If you act on it tomorrow night.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Okay. What's up?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all we got.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
No, if everybody look at those pages tonight, we're talking about them tomorrow.
Yeah.
This show got a burning desire to stay longer than that.
We're adjourned. Thank y'all.
Thank you.